Good evening. Meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, Wednesday, July 7, 2021. The Wacoite Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts, 02649. It is 6:00. We are broadcast live on local channel 18, streamed live on the Town of Mashpee website, I'd ask everyone to please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. First Order of Business approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 30. Everyone has received the minutes. Any comments, questions, changes? If none, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. New business. Vote to set public hearing date for consideration of an application made by Longfellow Design Build to construct a retail grocery business at 647 Falmouth Road, 9 Shellback Way, MAP 81, Lot 132. This special permanent application will be a mandatory referral to the Cape Cod Commission as a development of regional impact. And you should all have the notice, a copy of the notice.
Speaks for itself, just looking for a motion to set a public hearing date for August 4th at 7:10.
May I get a motion to set a public hearing for August 4th at 7:10?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, discuss and formulate questions relative-
Can I go back to that, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
So we open up the meeting and then we refer it to the Cape Cod Commission?
Yeah, so, and we'll make sure the butters letters and the public hearing notice reflects that. There will be no deliberations to occur at that opening. It'll really just be, open the public hearing, you'll make a referral to the commission pursuant to the requirements as a mandatory referral. We'll continue until the Cape Cod Commission sends it back to the planning board for its local review.
Great. Any other questions? Good. Discuss and formulate questions relative to the proposed community activity center overlay district in preparation for the meetings focused on density, height, neighborhood design, including setbacks and lot coverage requirements and parking, parking ratios. I asked to put this on the agenda, just so, we've got a pretty meaty meeting coming on the 21st with the Cape Cod Commission and Mashpee Commons. So I was hoping folks had had a chance to go through the zoning, the proposed zoning bylaw, and we could deliver a series of questions to the Commons in advance so that that meeting is productive. I'm sure we'll have questions that come up during the meeting as well, but if we could preempt the conversation with our specific set of questions, it certainly would make that meeting more productive.
Would you want those individually sent to the town planners and then you can compile so that we don't overlap questions?
Yeah, I mean, if you have questions, if you've gone through, you know, and we can go section by section, however you would like to do it, I would, I'd, I'd suggest that the questions, if you have them, go to Evan by Friday, because what we've told the Commons we want is we want the presentation the following Friday before the meeting on the 21st. So if we can get them our questions by Monday, Tuesday of next week, they will have a chance to respond, at least incorporate them hopefully into their presentation.
I'm confused. I thought we were just having an educational meeting on the 21st. We weren't going over the bylaw.
I thought it was a bit of both.
I thought we were just doing education, right Dennis? That's only education.
Educational.
And we were going to change that on the website and make it clear that it was just an educational thing about these concepts and their approach, but not about the bylaw. Because we haven't gotten the guidebook and we haven't got the regulating plan. And it was Liza Cox's idea to have it just be educational. That's what she said.
Go ahead.
Just my understanding, and I think my understanding, if you're wanting to put this on the agenda, it is an educational session, right? The goal was to understand how the proposed dimensional criteria apply to specific urban design principles and, you know, why they are what they are. So I feel it's a listening session, we really need to understand what's being proposed, but we need to understand it within the context of what was presented to you in the draft community center, draft community activity center overlay district. So, you know, the questions that I had submitted to the Commons and have discussed, you know, in these meetings is methodology for calculating density, why zero-foot setbacks in the core, why 85 or 100 or whatever percent lot coverage, why does that make sense? So you can't, I feel like, you know, without getting into the details of the overall concept, we need to make it relate to the dimensional criteria as it's proposed. That's my suggestion. That was my understanding as we walked away from the last meeting, but if that's not what the board is looking for, then I misunderstood.
I understand what Mary's saying about being the educational, but I like the idea of being able to pose some questions so that some of the educational stuff can be geared toward getting myself some better understanding with these different parts. So I like being able to add it, but I fully anticipate that night with that education, there are more questions that may pop up, they may want to ask. So I anticipate not just sitting there getting educated, I think they're going to have a, I think we're going to have some dialogue back and forth to clarify some points. And I myself, going through some of the stuff that currently exists compared to what they're proposing, I have some questions I want to get answered. So if they're educational, we can gear towards giving me some better understanding, just like you said, how do they calculate some of these things? I would like to ask some questions and maybe if I could send them to you so at least they have some idea of what I'm looking for.
And John, if I might-
Please.
I think, you know, by way of your discussions already, the questions that I've shared with you that I've already brought forth of the Commons, I think most of those are kind of in the public realm and we've discussed them here, and the Commons will probably, at least I would suggest, that they formulate this educational opportunity within the context of those questions presented. If I understood your desire to put this on the agenda was, is there anything we've missed so far that the board wishes to make the Commons aware of so that this presentation, this educational opportunity is responsive to those questions? And if not, fine. But if there are lingering questions relative to the specifics of the dimensional criteria, it's really about the dimensional criteria, that would, you know, benefit the subsequent future conversations, we should get them to them, and if there aren't, there aren't. I think, if I understood you, John, that was the intention for the night.
Yeah, I would expect that the presentation on the 21st is going to be educational in the context of what they're trying to do, you know, what their plan is. And a piece of that is the zoning bylaw. So if we can, if we can direct the conversation to answer our specific questions, then it makes that meeting much more productive and it's actually relevant to the proposed plan. And it isn't just theoretical.
So if the whole thing is, we don't have their proposed plan because we don't have the regulating plan and we don't have the design book, and Liza Cox said, okay, we'll stop talking about the bylaw and we'll do some educational piece about what these things are. So we keep going back and forth and back and forth. I have a million questions about this bylaw that I haven't expressed because I don't have the regulating plan and the design book, the design guide, and they're not ready yet. So she offered to stop talking about the bylaw and do an educational piece on the 21st, but not talk about the bylaw.
No, I think what she agreed, I think what she-
What's going on?
Let me clarify. I think what she-
This is all going round and around and around and around, and we keep going back and forth and we still don't, I think we should stop talking about the bylaw until we have the damn regulating plan and the design guide. I think we should put our foot down, because I think if we don't put our foot down and say no to this applicant who doesn't even still have a development agreement application that's complete with the Cape Cod Commission, they are just going to drag this out and we're never going to see the regulating plan and we're never going to see the design guide. And I accepted her plan because she said it was just going to be educational only.
May I?
But I'll just give you one point.
Please.
One of the things that come up was, and a thing you pointed out, and I pointed out the same thing in that packet they gave us, the diagrams in the back. What, I didn't understand what they meant. And, but that again goes towards the density and how they determine it. But yeah, I couldn't understand what they were, and that's one of the things he's bringing up.
Incredible.
But, so I'm not talking about bylaw, I'm talking about understanding how they get to these densities and how, that's what I want to learn about. So I have questions about that, so I want to pose those questions. I don't think we're specifically talking about the bylaw.
I didn't either.
No, but I'm, but I'm saying-
No bylaw, but the concepts of-
But I think you're taking this, you're taking this a little farther.
Can you let him finish?
But no, but I think-
I'm talking with him.
Yeah, but I mean, I think, I think you're taking it a little farther, because I think you made this about the bylaw, and my questions aren't about the bylaw. My question's about what Evan just pointed out. And, and that's what I'm hoping to get out of this. I, I think the bylaw is intermingled in there anyway, because that's how they're, that's how it's all put together.
Right.
That's what I'm looking to see. So if, this isn't about the bylaw, but the bylaw is always going to be there because that's really how it's all driven. So I think what they're going to do, hopefully, is what they said in-
Density, height, neighborhood design-
Right.
Including setback, lot coverage requirements and parking and parking ratios.
But all that stuff-
I didn't know that was going to be on there, because that's-
No, that's a separate, separate meeting.
But Mary, all that stuff is included in a bylaw.
Right, separate meeting.
Right, but, but there's like this theory about it. That, that's the educational piece.
Well, there's theory, but there's also what Evan just pointed out, how did they get to those densities? That's what they're going to answer those questions for us, hopefully. And that's what you were talking about.
Right.
I, I don't want to talk about the bylaw until I get the regulating plan.
Well, I think what we agreed at the last meeting-
And put our foot down.
We agreed that we were going to run on parallel paths. And I would ask you to go back and look at the minutes of the meeting, particularly the meeting with the selectmen, when we agreed that we would run parallel paths, development agreement, bylaw. John?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask, do you have the development agreement application?
Go ahead, Evan.
No, can I ask?
No.
Okay, so how can I have a parallel path when I don't have the development agreement application?
The process, the process is running a parallel-
When does that start?
It started months ago when we were given the bylaw.
The bylaw, but there's not a parallel path. I think we should wait until there's a parallel path with the development agreement application. Once we get that, I think we should go forward.
I think if we want the meeting to be productive on the 21st, and we want it relevant to the proposed, you know, their, their plan, which they've been reasonably specific with the outline of what they're proposing, and the proposed bylaws, let's develop, you know, let's at least provide them the questions so when they present on the 21st, it's relevant to what's been proposed and not theoretical.
Dennis, I don't know, Dennis, this is, this is really-
I'm still looking for a, a plan, like a layout of the project. How can I give height density if, okay, I know they have different areas, but I want to see the street layout so I know a four-story building may fit in that layout.
Yeah.
But if they don't give me that street layout, we shouldn't even be talking about that.
So that's a good question to ask.
We have, five times.
I asked them seven times.
We've asked you five times, Mr. Chairman.
Seven times.
They shouldn't come back until they bring that to us.
Can Dennis finish?
She said, seven times, I asked a lot of times, and even Evan, in every meeting, she said, oh, I get that next meeting. Next meeting comes, oh, we haven't did that yet, I get that next meeting. They just keep on pushing us, saying, Evan-
So you have that.
Let me just, because what, from my perspective, from the staff perspective, I don't think what Mary's asking for and what we're talking about are like different. I'm pretty sure we're on the same page for the most part, but I don't-
I agree.
What I'm saying is that the 21st is an educational opportunity, but to divorce it completely from what's proposed, I think is a missed opportunity. But with that being said, I've heard Dennis ask these questions numerous times.
Mm-hmm.
I've asked the question before, Mary's asked the question before.
Yes. Repeatedly.
I think-
Do I have to start documenting that?
I think it is well documented.
Should be in the minutes, probably.
But what I would say is, the question that I continue to have is, I, I don't see the benefit or the value in the long-term process that we're kind of skimming the surface of now in, in like stopping discussion and dialogue on the zoning component. Now, with that being said, for this educational opportunity, I think you, you and John and what I understood from the board's outcome are all on the same page with regard to the 21st. I don't think there's going to be a heavy deliberation or the intention, a heavy deliberation in the zoning.
Right.
You shouldn't divorce it completely from what's proposed. Do you know what I mean? Do I?
Let's keep it open.
Well, I mean, you have a bylaw, a proposed bylaw with a specific set of criteria. I think the boards need to know why that.
How'd you get to it?
What's the theory, theoretical or principle or methodology whereas that was derived?
Hmm.
This is as if we have a couple of extra questions to put into it.
I'm trying to understand how those numbers are derived.
You need to understand it until you get the design guide and the regulating-
But see, I don't agree with that.
I disagree.
You won't.
I disagree.
I disagree.
I don't agree with that, with that one portion of your position, and I do respect and understand the position, but you'll be much more well-equipped to discuss street layouts and densities when you have an understanding of why they're, they started there in the first place. You want to know why they get started there.
Well, if we-
Why they get started there.
If we put forth a couple of questions that we may or may not have, that, and when they get them ahead of time so they can prepare for it, they could say, well, this is covered in our informational presentation. We don't, we have it covered.
And Joe and John, everyone, if I, if I might, I, I feel very confident that the questions that have been discussed and provided to the Commons are more than adequate for them to give a thoughtful presentation on the 21st. I think if there, if there are no more questions, then let's wait for the 21st as we've described it and defined it as the board voted on the 21st. That's fine.
And see what happens.
So, so let's leave it as, if you've got-
And if you have more questions-
If you've got additional questions, please get them, even if you-
That's how I took it. You have something to put out there.
Even if you think they're on the list already?
Yeah.
I would say send them to Evan so he's got them by Friday. We can send a list off to Eliza or whoever at the beginning of next week so they are prepared for whatever they present back is relevant.
I think, you know, from the, you know, planner perspective, the board, the community, everyone wants to know what and why, you know, the who, what, where, and why, and how. And I don't, I, I think we need to, you know, understand the, again, I keep using the term methodologies, why, why are, why these figures and not some other figures.
Right. I would prefer to have an educational presentation that's geared toward what we're talking about and not theoretical.
That discussion and debate doesn't put the, the board in any particular position or advance any particular proposal. It merely provides everyone with data to proceed through the process.
I'd like to see what they bring us at that, that meeting, if they bring us anything that we asked them to bring to us.
What I think we need to-
No, absolutely.
Certainly be cognizant of, because I pretty, I felt, and you may agree or disagree, that they've heard the demand for the regulating plan and for-
I would think.
I don't anticipate having that on the 21st. I think what they're saying is, let's provide that educational opportunity, then suspend conversations about the zoning until we get farther into the development agreement. That's what I heard.
I did hear that as well.
I did too.
So I think that's-
Yeah, I think we'll be disappointed if we're, if we're expecting to see those two things on the 21st.
Because we can move forward after that meeting.
That's not going to happen.
Yes, but what we're talking about here is-
You mean, the 21st would be our last conversation? You, you understood that that would be our last meeting about this until they got us the regulatory plan, the regulating plan and the design guide?
With the exception of parking ratios.
Because that's being reviewed by that other group.
And then we, and then I, I-
Because I think if they, they don't give us the information that we're asking for, we should just say, come back to us when you're ready.
Well, we have three, we have, we have three meetings scheduled. Oh, no, we have two. Parking, parking was the last meeting.
Yep. But what Mary just, I think that was my general understanding. I think that's what the, where the Commons was positioning themselves was, we want to provide you with information and education and knowledge as to why these figures are there. We think it would behoove everyone involved in this process to let us as the applicant get further along with the commission so that we don't come back to a meeting and not be prepared with what you've asked for. That was my understanding there.
Yes.
And I got the same impression.
That was my understanding too.
Yes.
It kind of sounds like you guys are going to talk about the bylaw and not go-
So as I said, I'm pretty sure we're all on the same page.
So if you have-
We're all on the same page, we're just saying it differently.
Yeah.
So if you have questions that you'd like answered on the 21st, get them to Evan by Friday so we can provide them to the Commons by Monday or Tuesday so that they can incorporate them into their presentation for the 21st, so the presentation on the 21st is relevant and not theoretical.
So, John, those questions that just to do with these titles, density, height, neighborhood, design and setback?
Correct. That's the meeting on the 21st.
Not part.
Yeah.
I should compile the list of questions that I've provided and that I've heard from the boards, and I'll send, maybe I'll send them to you first so that you know what's already being responded to.
Perfect.
That actually would be good to have going into it.
That's a good idea, I think.
So why don't I do that before the end of, end of-
Tomorrow.
I'm out of the office tomorrow, going to the aquarium with my kids. I'm sorry, folks.
Enjoy the aquarium.
I'll get it to you on Friday. Get it to me by Monday. Does that work?
Great.
As long as, yeah, as long as you can turn it, no, we'll get it to you by Monday so you can turn it around to the Commons by Tuesday so that they can prepare for Friday, which is the mandate we've given them, so that we can see the material prior to the meeting on the 21st.
But he's getting us our list of lingering questions by-
By Friday.
Yeah.
We're getting him our questions, if they're not on that list, by Monday.
Are we good?
Got it? Everybody got those dates?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Review recommendations for local comprehensive plan consultants and score proposals in accordance with comparative evaluation criteria of issued RFP. All right. Who wants to go first?
I just look at them filling out to do.
Actually, I did have a question. Evan, we, when we, the subcommittee met, it was a question about whether a CD or thumb drive requirement was missing from principle.
They both were missing.
Okay.
Weston and Sampson provided us with a thumb drive of their proposal, but not the two comprehensive plans that we-
Okay.
-asked for, so I didn't feel like we should not respond to either. However, I did, the plans that they cited are easily accessible, so I did review them and then-
Yep.
I thought I sent them to you. Did you not receive them from me?
I don't think so.
I didn't.
But either way, the reason, that, that was the reason, they both, they both equally were non-responsive to that particular request.
Okay. So I scored them appropriately, but I said that they did. So I overscored them.
Evan, on-
Dennis.
On principle, did you find any reference, like you told us about Weston and Sampson you called up?
Yes, they are, I only was heard from Ben Frey, who was one of the main, the two main references, Ben Frey and Rod Melanson, that you have an email from me in your pile from Rod and I have notes here from the other consultant who, who, I'll read you my notes. It's in there. Answer, absolutely depends, the answer, I asked the question, were you generally satisfied, extremely satisfied with, you know, work product timelines, you know, et cetera, et cetera? And they said, the answer absolutely depends on who you ask. The town, and the subject town formed an advisory committee, worked with the consultants, jointly planned all-town-wide outreach and engagement. In general, it was fantastic. It was the largest turnout over the course of the shirets that they've had for any project of that type in the town of Newcastle. Wildly successful from that perspective. The town accepted the LCP but not the draft code, but they modified the code and that was eventually adopted. Ben, the reference, was extremely satisfied with the work. He offered the advice that whomever you choose, follow their advice. They didn't do that early and they felt it hindered the process, but that was just his kind of words of wisdom. Rod Melanson was generally satisfied with their response. I did leave a voicemail for Buff Chase, I emailed the director of planning in Newton, Barney Heath, and I emailed George Proakis, who's in the mayor's office in Somerville. I think they're all out of the office this week. I left voicemails also, but I think we can score with the response, with the reference responses we've received.
Okay, good.
Thoughts?
The first one is yes, right? The proposal is complete.
Yes.
Yes for both of them.
For both of them.
I don't know how you want to approach it, John.
Did anybody have a, did anybody have a preference?
Well, I have one question here. So under the credibility of past performance, the question, did the proposal provide sufficient number of credible references? What's the benchmark for that?
We requested in the RFP, a number of references.
Because, you know, for principle, I see a number, and for Weston, I see two.
Again, like I said before with Weston and Sampson, I had some questions regarding their provided references in the RFP because they listed specific reference projects with contact information, whom I did call and spoke with some of those folks, and there was confusion on my end because I asked about Weston and Sampson when the consultant that they had actually worked with was one of the sub-consultants.
Yeah.
So it was confusing. Then additionally, Weston and Sampson provided a number of reference projects that are not completed but not included in their references, so I didn't call them. They didn't list them as their references even though they provided the calling numbers. So I would say there's a, you know, a diverse array of references and certainly adequate, but, you know, it was, it was confusing for me. I was satisfied with their responses when they had each of the sub-consultants involved in our conversation, and I began to understand the mechanics of how things are working here, but it was confusing. But to your question, what is the benchmark for how many, it would be contained in the RFP, let me see if I-
Well, I know Mary and John did it. Did you guys have an idea for how many references would be sufficient?
I mean, they provided-
I think I defined it. I, I did define it.
Yeah, and they each provided more than three. The question is, did we hear back?
Yeah, well, that's the thing, is you could provide a name all day long, but if John Smith doesn't call you back-
What I would suggest is, why don't we decide to start with principle or Weston and begin going through the order?
Sure.
Yeah, good.
That works for me.
Go with Weston, we start with first.
Good.
If you want to go in the order of the presentations, we can do that. I can finish since the first.
Yep, so Weston, first, yes. Community engagement, you know, did they include community engagement and visioning plan? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Second one, I had yes.
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 Third one, I had yes. Same.
Yes.
Fourth one, I had yes.
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 I gave them two and a half points.
Agreed.
Extra. Bonus.
Because they did-
I gave them one beast engine, but yeah.
And just for, the reason they're extra points is what brings them from an advantageous proposal to a highly advantageous proposal.
Okay.
So everything above the advantageous is extra and sets the bar.
I gave them two and a half on the next one.
So that's if surveys were proposed. Okay. I did two?
Two and a half on the intention to utilize digital resources and schedule of community envisioning events. Both got yeses, so they get a total of 25.
So you gave them full points there?
I did.
I did two.
Is that the consensus?
I gave them 22.
22?
Yeah.
Maybe I missed it in the RFP, but I didn't see the specificity with regard, besides in our conversation, and we're not scoring on the interview, unless, you know, that wasn't my intention. But the indication of an intention to, or excuse me, how to demonstrate, did they demonstrate concisely how surveys would be developed and rolled out? Where in the RFP is that?
They talk about having it on paper, or not, and then they have, they had all those bullet points about how they were going to outreach to the community. So that's why I gave them 2.5.
Yeah, I thought it was pretty clear.
To your point you just said, the interview wasn't scored, but I think the interview and some of the questions, even with Mary asking with regards to Cape Cod Commission, do highlight some points that may not have been quite articulated in the paperwork, so it clarifies this a little bit better, so I'm glad we asked some questions.
Okay. I understand that. So, I mean, when I was reading this, I was thinking about, did they go beyond just contemplating the survey? Did they provide, you know, specific actions? And I'm okay with that. I just wanted to take the question.
Yeah. I'll write it down here, because there's.
Yeah, if, in their proposal, the first, it's unnumbered, you know, it's in section five, the first page. They give a pretty good detailed description of what they would be doing.
So the consensus is full points for the first section?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
You okay with that, Dennis?
Yep, I think I got mine already scored.
Next one, credibility of past performance. I said no, because I wasn't sure.
This was, just to provide some background, this is where I had a hangup when I had called references, because, you know, Weston and Sampson, have they completed master, at least two, and it depends how we approach the methodology here. In the references, yes, the comp plan for Portsmouth, Rhode Island, which hasn't been adopted, it's in its final draft and approaching adoption, from what I understood from their website. The Medfield master plan was the one where I had called and said, you know, how's Weston and Sampson? Like, well, we worked with Beta Group and Community Circle on this. I don't know what you're talking about, but. So if we're, is it the consultant and subconsultants have the collective team completed at least two? I would say the answer is yes. And additionally, they have a number of ongoing unadopted plans. So for that minimal criteria, I would say, yes, they have completed at least two, including when you're looking through the lens of subconsultants.
Okay.
Well, they went to all the towns, that kind of stuck out to me. Yeah.
So the next, the next one, you know, provide sufficient number of credible references. They provided references. We don't know how credible, because we didn't get responses.
So I spoke only with.
Oh, so wait, I think, did the proposal provide a sufficient number of credible references? Yes. It's the next one. The next one is, were the references generally satisfied?
Well, I think it's two points. We don't know if they're a credible reference. They gave us names. We didn't hear back from any, from, we didn't hear back from a number of them, so we don't know if they're credible or not.
Well, I mean, I.
No, it means like, are they somebody who used them for something like this?
Yeah, like the city of Somerville hasn't replied back, but yet they're credible reference, I would assume.
I'm assuming, I'm saying, I read it as credible, meaning, did they, you know, is it my aunt?
To be fair, I only reached out for references today. So it was a short window, and it's a tough week to respond, because I think a lot of people are out. I did check on all of these plans. I did check that they're real. I checked on the staff, and these are real people. What I was particularly focused on when I called references, though, were the large-scale statewide plans or the local comprehensive or master plans. Some of the MVP and climate mitigation work, I didn't prioritize in my, in reaching out to references. So I haven't had any response from them. I didn't submit a question to them, because I was really concerned with those. I would say the references provided are credible references. When we get down to the question about satisfaction with the work, this is where, like, from Sarah Raposa, who I spoke to from Medfield, was ecstatic about Beta Group, and ecstatic about the work that Community Circle did.
Okay.
Extremely satisfied with their work. Didn't really respond within the context of Weston and Sampson, so that's something to think about. I did speak with Michelle Sheehan from the state Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, and she was generally satisfied with some hesitation. She felt that it was a budget constraint that really made the work product not what she had anticipated. So she said, you know, upon delivery of the plan, there was a lot of rewriting that happened at a staff level. And she attributed that to budget constraint. She thinks that they had provided more money and more time, that the work product might have been different, but she said, I'm generally satisfied, but here were my issues. So when you look, when you go further down, the intention here was to award the proposals where there was extreme satisfaction with the consultant. So I would say that they would not receive those additional points from the references we spoke to, but would get the points for the general satisfaction and the quality and diversity of the references provided. That's my opinion.
Did you just talk to three?
I didn't hear back from Gary Crosby from the town of Portsmouth.
So to clarify this in my mind, so it says, yes, one point beyond two. So if we only have one or two, then they get zero, or they get two?
So they provided reference projects for a town of Portsmouth and for Medfield. So they get the minimum criteria. If they provided more, which they haven't. They're underway. I do not believe, under the methodology that I mapped out here, that they would get the additional points.
So it would be no zero on that one?
When they were naming the towns, I kind of, okay, I get it.
Okay, I get you.
That was how I had intended on the scoring, but I'm.
Yeah.
So what question are we on?
Sorry, I was just giving you the rundown. The synergy of how it all kind of relates to each other.
We're at the top of the following page. Were any called references extremely satisfied?
Just to go back to the top, John, if I may. Did the proposal include sufficient evidence of having completed at least two LCPs? I believe yes.
Yes.
Did the proposal provide a sufficient number of credible references? I would additionally say yes.
Good.
I would have preferred some additional responses, but there is a diversity, and all of these people, again, are real.
And what are we doing with the next question?
Yeah.
Were references generally satisfied?
The two spoken with were generally satisfied. One was actually, the Medfield, Sarah Raposa was ecstatic about Beta Group, okay? The subconsultant, Beta Group, who did the transportation portion. So when we approached this question for extreme satisfaction, as it pertains to Weston and Sampson, her extreme satisfaction was with the subconsultant, not the primary consultant. So how does the board want to handle the scoring here?
That's my question.
I put down, originally I put down four.
On?
On, were references generally satisfied with the work conducted?
Yes.
Because we only talked to two, and one was like, oh, it was budget constraints. And I'm fine with Beta being a subconsultant, you know, they're on the organizational chart. So I wasn't going to give them the full five. I was going to give them the two.
Oh, I didn't know we had an option to that.
I didn't know we had an option.
I thought it was yes or no.
Oh, yeah. You don't have to give the full.
Yeah, there's a maximum, a maximum award. I tried to make it dichotomous for the ease of the review and an easily explained methodology for how we score. But you can't award partial points. I would ask, if you award partial points, you enumerate why you're not giving the full five on that section.
Yeah, I gave them five.
I gave them five.
I'm, I'll be, I'm fine with going with five, without having to write out an explanation.
So the last question on that page, did the proposal indicate a substantial track record? I think that's a no.
I think it's a no, because I'm going off the reference projects here, which they don't list more, they list two. They did note a number of projects that are underway, and I need to note for the board that you'll see some projects here. I know this is John and Mary when we did our preliminary review. There's a master plan update for Littleton, Mass., for North Andover, Mass., and for Natick, Mass., that, and for Kittery, Maine, that were input into this response that they noted was in error. RKG, who they partner with on a number of these things, was the consultant there, so those we aren't scoring. It's not attributed to them. So additionally, looking at some of the things they noted in their presentation, I don't think, like, the community comprehensive plan for the town of Situate, that's in the very early stages. I don't think we can give them points for not having completed that process.
Hadn't completed more than two comprehensive.
So I think they get two, or they do not get additional points for exceeding the tier.
So I have it as zero for that one.
You have it as zero?
Right.
And the next question's interesting.
Yeah, because this is, is it them or the subs that they use? Because they're thrilled with Beta Group, didn't know who Weston and Sampson were.
I'm fine with the subcontractor being part of it.
I should note, just, you know, in either ways, it's one point we're talking about here.
Right.
The scope of Beta's involvement on that project was limited to only the transportation section. It did not encompass the whole update that they had done there. That was led by Community Circle. I don't, I'm familiar with that firm. So it's one point. You can give credit to RKG for that section, but if you're asking, it's not apples to apples. I'd leave it to the board to decide how they, if they want to grant the point or not.
What do you think, Joe?
The one point for the bottom of that page, right? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah.
No, it's the one point at the top of the next page. Extremely satisfied.
From my perspective, it's.
Do we get any extreme satisfaction?
We got one.
We did get one. Okay, it was one. All right.
Okay, one.
So are we at 16? Is that where we're at for that?
Except for word, references diverse.
Diverse?
Define diverse.
References?
You know, I was looking at this, you know, where, what were the group of stakeholders? Was it all municipal staff? Was it statewide? Was it local? Were there private, was there private developers? Were there, you know, was it just one type of entity that references are offered from? In this case, you know, just look at the references. There are two local planners, a bunch of statewide stuff.
Right.
Say yes, it's generally responsive to the request for a diverse set of references.
And I was yes, too. I just wanted to make sure we were all thinking the same.
So we have 17 points there.
Yep.
Okay, experience, technical expertise.
Odle in the wrong port, sorry.
Okay.
Okay, first question, under expertise. I said yes.
I did too.
I did too.
Yes.
I said yes to the next one. There are actually three.
No, I will say in, okay, because we're not on that yet. In their book, they do actually identify AICP. But in this book, I don't see it on anyone's.
I don't think that any of them are AICP. They're all urban designers, architects.
They have it after their name.
Well, this one, none of them had it at all.
Yeah, but they would if they were.
All right, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Okay, so they get a yes. Next one, clear commitment from the firm to include senior staff throughout the entirety of the development?
And just for senior staff, we define senior staff as someone with 10 or more years' experience in the field. I think everyone on that call were senior staff.
Yeah.
Based on the way we defined it in the evaluation criteria. It was 10 or more years of experience. I say yes, personally.
I said yes, too. It's hard to, I mean, entirety of the plan, who knows, but, okay. Experience working on Cape Cod, I said yes.
I said yes, minimal.
Minimal, yeah.
I said extensive.
I did, too.
I'm inclined to say you agree with Mary. I mean, they gave a large breadth.
I might have missed it. Explain it to her.
You know, so they didn't complete any master plans, right? But what they had alluded to in their meetings, that they've worked in every single town on the Cape.
Just about.
I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page.
So I would say, you know, this question is really to get at, do you understand local issues? And I would say they do extensively.
Yeah, I actually know.
So they had 25 points in that section.
Yeah.
Okay, quality of proposed plan of services. Does a proposed plan of services sufficiently detail, fully evaluate? I said yes.
Yes.
Proposed plan of services address all the required components? I said yes. Does the proposed plan of services include basic scheme of producing a complete report? I said yes.
Yes. I think you're no extra points, though.
I thought they had.
Yeah, I gave them, I gave them all 10. I gave them all 10.
I gave them all 10 as well.
Based on that.
I feel like this is what really separates the proposals, where, and Mary got to this when she was, you know, discussing with them in their presentation. They, and their response outlined who the staff person would be to deal with every single chapter or element of the LCP. Additionally, as we had asked for, the opportunities for reducing redundancies and merging chapters, as well as being particularly responsive to each of those elements, which I felt went above and beyond. That's what I was impressed when I first opened it. So I think they do deserve extra points, and the amount, I think, is.
Well, who would, I mean, who would lead that particular topic and what they were going to deliver? I mean, it was pretty, it was pretty comprehensive. So I gave them 10.
I still gave them five.
So I got up to 25, so I'm at 92.
What's the term?
I got 92.
I got 92 points.
Okay.
So we agree 10 points are awarded there, so they get one, two, 25 points in the end.
Principal. Down the page, I had yes, 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 and yes.
I had, for second one, kinda. I didn't think their plan to engage the public was enough. I think they gave us an example from another town that they were in.
They did.
Yeah.
They didn't, even to just take it and take out the word of the other, the name of the other town and put Mouchbe in there, like.
The only thing that dissuaded me, but given the points here, is it says general consistency. And so general consistency is a lower level than completely consistent with our RFP, so I was kind of.
I gave them a 2.5. I gave them 50%.
I'm sorry, guys, what question do you want?
Second one.
Second one down.
Did the community engagement and visioning plan outlined in the proposal show general consistency? So it's kind of like, we gave them the engagement plan, and they didn't even kick it back to us. They kicked back a different, a different town. You know, it was like an example of what they did in another town, but they didn't even.
In Portsmouth, New Hampshire.
They didn't even kick back what, we gave them what we wanted to do. So I gave them a, I gave them 2.5.
I gave them full points, because, I mean, they used Portsmouth, New Hampshire, which is reasonably relevant, as a benchmark. And if you read that plan, it's incredibly detailed.
I gave them five, yeah.
I gave them a five, too. I gave them five, because I know they use another town as an example, and I understand what you're saying.
I understand what you're saying, too.
Five it is.
Just, you know, the intent of providing them the outline and draft of what we had discussed was to let them know what we are thinking.
Yeah.
And, but what we also made clear in the RFP was that we aren't, and in our pre-proposal discussion, you know, we aren't married to this 100%. We need to deliver something at least this good. So if they've delivered something at least that good, I would say, award the points.
Yeah.
If it's not that good, then don't. So I don't know what the consensus is there.
I think we got consensus of five.
Yeah, I got five, too.
Did the community engagement action plan describe how the firm intends to collaborate and communicate with elected and appointed official staff and other stakeholders?
I had kinda.
If they had it, I missed it.
I had, I had kinda. I had a 2.5.
Again, in the thing, again, they talk about their interactions with Portsmouth, and they do explain how they met with city officials and have you. So I think that's the way they're explaining how they did it with Portsmouth, as a way of explaining how they would do it with us.
Yeah.
All right, that's fair.
I don't want to give them full points, though. Because they didn't incorporate what we put forward to them.
Yeah, to Mary's point, we spent time producing an RFP that was pretty clear and concise, and we're saying, you know, respond to this. And references are great, and we can extrapolate a lot of information from references, but.
But to your point, when you read the paragraph, it's very, very, very light on it, so I have no problem with two and a half.
All right, two and a half there.
And just, you know, I would say, just, you know, I was trying to create a score sheet that was dichotomous, either yes or no. You can award partial points, if that's what you want to do, fine. I would ask you to enumerate why you're rewarding partial points, so that I can go on the procurement file.
Okay.
So are you taking notes on that?
I'm going back to five.
So it's. So I said the reason why, which was that they gave us, I don't think they kicked back our, our community engagement plan, and they just, they gave us what they did in some other place.
Understood.
That's what.
Well, I would, but if we're going to give them five for the previous one, which I think we agreed we would, I think the reason for two and a half there is it's very light. It's not.
Not enough detail.
Yeah.
Understood.
It's one sentence.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next one, did they contemplate the use of surveys? I said yes.
And in their plan for Portsmouth, they clearly use surveys, because they talk about it.
Correct.
So I would give them yes for that as well.
The next one, I said no.
I said no as well.
Um, what did I say here? I said yes. Consensus?
Yes. I mean, no.
No.
But I'll follow along.
I mean, you said no. If surveys are proposed, the applicant demonstrate, concisely demonstrate how surveys would be developed and rolled out, I said no.
I also said no.
I said no.
I agree.
Next one, digital resources. I said yes.
Yes.
I said yes.
Schedule for community engagement, I said yes, although it was sort of.
What is the concise schedule? So I said no.
Five.
The schedule?
Yeah.
It's on the next page.
Well, it starts on page 44.
It starts on page 44.
So, I mean, I know the general timeline of the rollout, but I mean, like.
I didn't think we could say no to that.
I said no, I said no on both, to mine, but if you're saying, did they provide us with their Gantt chart of timeframe, and that's adequate, fine with me, too.
All right, so what?
They have specific, they have specific dates.
The question is, did the proposal include a concise schedule for community engagement? And this clearly says, dates and times, and, so I think it's a yes, right?
It's the, it's the Gantt chart.
Well, even, but it starts on page 44. It says August to November, November to February.
This chart here, which lays it out.
February to June, June to November, yeah.
All right, so how many points did that total up to?
So they get the 17 and a half? No, 18 and a half. Nope, 17 and a half.
I don't know. So the first question, is that, are there points awarded to that one, or is it just a yes or no?
Where, the first one?
Community engagement, the proposal.
No, there's no points.
There's no points.
If you said no to that, not scoring anything else.
So five.
Five, 10, 12.
If they didn't provide you a community engagement plan, we're not wasting it.
Yeah, 17 and a half.
So 17, yep, there it is. Okay, good. Just going to get on the next page here.
17 and a half. Credibility of past performance includes sufficient evidence completing two, I said yes, just because I said yes on the other one.
I agree.
Although both of them are no.
I agree.
Did the proposal provide a sufficient number of credible references? I guess that's a yes. Generally satisfied, I said yes.
I agree. What do you think?
It's, well, it goes back to that general term, because there are a couple here that say, eh, they're generally satisfied. That's the last sentence.
We have to be consistent.
Yeah, it's yes. And the last one's an yes as well.
So Ben Frey was extremely satisfied with the work. He was a selectman at the time. He's now the chairman of the planning board. Rod Melanson was generally satisfied. So they were both generally satisfied. One, there would be one additional point for the extreme satisfaction from Ben Frey.
Okay. Okay, we'll get to that. Did the proposal indicate a substantial track record of providing evidence of having completed more than two comprehensive plans? I said no.
I put no, too.
So I think this is kind of getting at methodology here, there is a substantial track, what scale? Townwide, neighborhood scale? I mean, because like, Somerville, Minesquartucket, Providence, those are substantial plans, but are we weighing them the same?
Yeah, the small scale, but...
It's smaller pieces of a bigger plan.
So that's, that's the question I posed to the board.
I said no.
So if no, then that's...
No, no, no.
So I think there was just the two, right?
Correct. So there's, there's ten points there, and then they get a one for the extremely satisfied.
Is that right?
On the next page. Right, whatever, who was his, what was his name?
Yes, Ben Frey.
Yeah.
Eleven. Eleven or sixteen?
It's sixteen.
Sixteen.
And don't forget, actually, the references diverse.
Jesus, my mat's off, yeah.
I put the total in the wrong part of the thing, so the total needs to go under, were references diverse, that would be added to that total.
Must have been seventeen as well.
And they were, yes.
Yes.
So seventeen.
I put eighteen.
Okay. Technical expertise. Diverse skill set, I said yes.
I said yes as well.
Oh, yeah, okay, that was...
Wrong, wrong question.
Sorry.
Next one was no.
Correct.
I had no.
Senior, I'm sorry?
They don't have a planner?
They, they do not.
Not the certified.
They don't have a certified planner.
Three was no.
Is there a clear commit, yeah, senior staff, I said yes.
I said yes, if you look at all their subconsultants and their resumes...
I was just looking at the two girls that were on there with them, and they were very beginning.
You want to look at the resumes provided for, particularly the subconsultants?
I didn't go through all of them.
And Russ? I would say yes.
Okay.
By virtue of the resumes provided.
Right.
I just looked at the...
And then the last one, I said yes, but minimal.
Agreed.
Yeah, I gave them a two and a half.
All right.
So that, that total of twenty?
Twenty-two and a half.
Where's the two and a half?
Fifteen.
Fifteen plus two, two and halves.
Two, two and a half.
Because we got a no, right? So that's twenty.
Oh, that's right, yep, you're right, yep.
Okay, all right.
Twenty. Okay. Last page. I had yes, yes, yes.
That's right, I did.
I had no on the second question.
Really?
Wait, I had a no, too.
Because they didn't...
Oh, you are right.
They didn't spell out how they would, how they would manage all of the individual chapters and elements, and where they would find opportunities to consolidate those chapters, so, or reduce redundancies, whereas Weston and Sampson did.
Yep.
Really, I feel like this proposal did not, and I said zero for that.
Okay, so there's ten...
What extra points?
Ten points, do they get extra points?
I didn't get many extra points.
So I did say, I said yes on the third, and extra points, I additionally said no.
Right.
That's ten.
So there's ten points. Thirty.
Seventeen.
Forty-seven and a half?
What do we have?
I had eighty and a half.
It was seventeen point five, sixteen, twenty-two point five, and ten.
No, I think it was seventeen and point five, seventeen, twenty, and ten.
That's what I have, John. Where does that leave us?
That leaves us at thirty-four and a half, fifty-four and a half, sixty-four and a half.
That answer pretty queasy, easy.
Sixty-four and a half, and the other one was ninety-two.
Ninety-two.
Correct.
And so my question to the board is, do you want to merely submit this, the scoring worksheet to Rodney, who is the chief procurement officer? Because he, he's the one who opens the cost proposals, we don't get to see those. Or do we want to recommend, by virtue of the scoring, one form or the other? Or do you want to just have him choose based on the outcome of the scoring?
I would recommend, I would not, I don't want, I don't think we should give him the scoring sheets, because who recommends as a board?
I scribbled a little, he's not seeing this, like...
Yeah.
Yeah, based on our scoring of ninety-two versus forty, whatever.
Sixty-seven and a half, yeah.
You okay with recommend? Dennis? Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, so moved.
Okay, good.
How about a motion?
Second.
You're going to make a motion.
Second motion.
Make a motion.
I did, I...
So you second it.
Oh, you made a motion.
So moved.
Mary moves, Dennis second.
She moved, she seconds, all right.
We recommend Weston and Sampson and...
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
I will put it in writing to...
With the scoring numbers.
I will put it in writing to the TM.
Dennis, a trend going on here.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Do you want my scoring sheet?
I would like everyone's scoring sheets for the, even though they're all the same, I'll probably put a master scoring sheet in there, but I'll keep it on...
Oh, no, mine are all different, so that's why I got to change it.
This helps with the procurement officer.
All right, I'm going to make a motion, we adjourn.
No, we're not done yet.
We're not done yet.
He has other, other things that they want.
No, I'm still filling out the second one.
Committee meeting.
Committee reports, Cape Cod Commission.
There's no report from the Cape Cod Commission.
Community preservation.
So they met on June twenty-fourth, the CPC made a recommendation that town meeting fund more work at the Aquay Bay Boat Ramp, in particular, the boat ramp itself, to be replaced, for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
You sent us that, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it wasn't in the minutes. And then next year, because there's been so much activity in the real estate, the state anticipates that our match for our community preservation surcharge on our taxes will be thirty-two percent from, from the state. And for FY twenty-two, we'll have one point three million dollars to spend on affordable housing, open space, recreation, and historic preservation.
Design review.
No meeting.
Plan review.
No meeting.
Environmental oversight, no meeting. Historic district commission?
No meeting.
Military civilian advisory council.
As of last week, I was officially appointed by the governor to the civilian, the community advisory council is what they call it, and I've been sworn in the whole nine yards.
Outstanding.
Are you a private?
So I'm now a voting member.
Okay.
It only took two years, so I actually am a voting member.
Okay, now...
How many does Mashbi get?
Now I make a motion.
One vote.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
She has a question. It is one vote for...
Because I thought there was a vacancy.
On that council?
On the CAC for the EMC.
I have no idea.
You're the, you're on the community, citizen advisory council?
Council for the base.
For the base?
Yes.
But not for the environmental management council?
There's two different ones.
Okay.
And we meet joint a lot of times.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Looking for a second.
Okay, there's a motion on the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.